Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, November 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the pledge of allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with me, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we gather before you tonight, and as always, we start off by saying thank you. Thank you for your grace, for your love, for your forgiveness. Thank you for loving us perfectly, even though we're an imperfect people. And in that imperfection, we will strive to do our best tonight. We will make the best decisions that we can for the city of Shenandoah, for its residents, its businesses, its strategic partners. And we ask for your hand of wisdom and guidance upon us as we make our way through this agenda. We pray these things in your son's name and all God's people said. Amen. All right, well, good evening, everybody. Let me start off by saying that we do have some special guests here tonight. I'd like to say hello to Commissioner Charlie Riley in the back of the room. Thank you for coming, Commissioner, as well as a lot of residents. We love it when you show up. So exciting to see a good crowd here, and we hope that we bring a good agenda to the table for you. We're going to move right into our citizens forum, which is item five, and we're going to invite citizens up to the podium to speak for three minutes. We're going to ask you to speak into the microphone so that the folks on YouTube can hear you. And just want to remind you that we listen to your comments. We're not able to deliberate with you during the comment section, so don't be offended if we don't answer a question or engage with you in conversation, but we do listen and we do appreciate your comments. Once again, each citizen is invited to speak for three minutes, and you can speak on any item on the agenda or non-agenda items. My first person that signed up is Tyson Breedlove. Tyson, if you'd like to approach the podium.
My name is Tyson Breedlove. I live at 15 Karen Oaks Place. And for the past few weeks, I've been quite worried about this proposed overpass, perhaps an underpass. And I've thought about it a lot, and it's worried me, it's worried my neighbors, it's worried everybody that I talk to. And what it's really about is, I think, two different visions for our community. One vision has, it's about overpasses, it's about a flyover over here onto your beautiful Shenandoah streets. It's got an overpass over Grogan's Mill, it's got Grogan's Mill, maybe six lanes. That's not my vision of this community. I think that that's going to turn us into a thoroughfare. I think that it's going to make people not want to live here. It might make people like to commute through here, and I probably will do that by a little bit. So I want to just, I guess, promote a vision of our community that is positive, you know, over the next two years, the next five years, the next 10 years. Because I don't understand, you know, whose vision this is to put in all of these construction projects that don't benefit, they don't seem to benefit anybody that I know. You know, why don't we start talking about the things that we love about Shenandoah and Grogan's Mill, you know, the park trails? Maybe we can build a bridge, a pedestrian bridge over Grogan's Mill, something beautiful, not an overpass. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, the next person that's signed up to speak is Alex Warmeth. There's Alex.
My name is Alex Warmeth. I live at 11 Eatonshire in Shenandoah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to have a few minutes with you today. I wanted to address item number eight on your agenda forthcoming. I'm seeking a small change in your resolution by adding three words, and I'll give you a little bit of background and then tell you why I've asked for the change. And I'm fully supportive, and I'm greatly appreciative of your work that you've done to bring forward this resolution on item number eight. So basically, in 2019, a number of people, including myself, worked to change the outlook for going for an overpass and an underpass, and it was just like wild and crazy shootout of 15, 20, $25 million events. That happened, but now here we are again. It's back on the plate, the exact same proposal, probably from the same people. But first off, I want to acknowledge Charlie Riley in the back because he was very supportive in helping us defeat the first event in 2018, and I thank him greatly for his input and support. And secondly, more importantly, after that, Charlie stepped forward and put in the flyoff of Grogan's Mill onto Research Forest, which impacted greatly, improving the quality of life of 500 Woodlands residents and over 500 Shenandoah residents. That was a great improvement. Traffic backed up from way back off of that intersection. Mr. Mayor knows that more than any of us, so I want to thank him for that effort. But for tonight, what I'm trying to avoid is sounding like a broken record. I know that Charlie Riley and his team that works on his mobility program has done a great job to bring forward a proposal, I think is a great one, and you guys are supporting that, and I'm thankful. But if we look back in time, the language in 21-019 speaks to only an overpass. The last time we defeated this thing, they pushed hard for either an overpass or an underpass. I just don't want to back up again and find us 24 months from now, and these guys on the other side are now pushing for an underpass. And I think it would be more inclusive if we dealt with the issue as it had been previously dealt with in 2018 by just using the word "or an underpass" after the words. I'll hand out just quickly, and I know my time is short, but...
Would you just do me a favor, and if you'll give those to Courtney, she'll get them to us. Thank you, Alex.
And again, we've just got to be really appreciative of what Charlie and you guys have done to get us to where we are, to try to stand back and not have an overpass, at the top of which would be higher than the roofs of the people that live in the nearby vicinity.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jano Houston.
Mayor, I have handouts. May I pass them to you?
Sure, absolutely.
My name is Jano Houston. I live at 502 Hickory Ridge Drive in Shenandoah. Mayor, I would like to...
Did Charlie Riley get one?
Yeah.
Pause that, please, Chris. Thank you.
I am also here to speak about the intersection at Research Forest and Grogan's Mill. And just very quickly, I want to thank you, Mayor, Councilman McLeod, Administrator Ryer, and Council Fairby for meeting with me yesterday. I appreciate the conversation, and no offense, Mayor and Councilmen, but actually, the best part of the conversation happened after you guys left. So, all right. But thank you for meeting with me, and thank you for taking my call on the 22nd.
I get that a lot.
And thank you, Councilman Brott, for taking my call on the 23rd. This is an issue that's, it's a hill on which I die, and there aren't very many of those, but that's where we stand. Because a massive change that's being suggested with the diverging diamond interchange would be devastating to that intersection for both Shenandoah and the Woodlands. And what I'd like to go through very quickly is just for public record, because I know all of you have seen the Strand Associates Incorporated study, but for the record, what I'd like to actually discuss is that you have, in these traffic studies, you have six levels of service. And what levels of service we're trying to ascertain is traffic, flow through traffic, and also turning traffic. And so if you hear anything that's discussing turning movements, they're talking about turning traffic, typically a 90-degree turn, if you will. So there are six levels of service. There are A, B, C, D, E, and F. And according to the Strand's study, everything from A through E is an acceptable level of service, but when you get to F, then you're looking at a category called Needs Improvement. And so those are the categories that will warrant looking at these more specifically. If you look at the top slide that I have for you, this is at a signalized intersection, and these are all based on the number of seconds of delay that are indicated at that intersection, and that's how you get that grading. If you look at the bottom PowerPoint slide, what you'll see is highlighted in yellow, Research Forest Drive at Grogan's Mill. And what you'll see is currently at both the AM and the PM peak, what you're going to see is that there's a level of C and D. Those are completely acceptable in today's service. Then if you project, if you go down to, on page two, and you see on the back, I've highlighted in blue, there are projections for 2030 and projections for 2045, what you're going to see at that intersection is for overall intersection inspection, we're at a D for both AM and PM, and we're at 2045, we're at a D and an E. Let me state, that's if you do absolutely nothing to those intersections. And already, Commissioner Riley has already put in the right-hand turn lane. So what I'd like to just state to you that if any of these minimal at-grade improvements are made, then that's going to improve them. And I know that you all are going to talk about at-level, or at-grade levels of service, so thank you for bringing that up in your presentation. As I close, I just want to say one thing. We're in a post-COVID world, and even Mr. Gil Staley in the Community Impact stated that we have less, we have greater vacancies in the Woodlands right now than we used to have. And what that means is more people are working from home, and we need to determine if that 2019 data is actually corresponding now to a 2021 world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, next up at the podium is Ms. Esther Lum.
Yes, Esther Lum, 31, South Emery Bend. I'm really here to talk about the dual permitting. It's number 15, and I know that there's another citizens forum after that. But just to follow on what they're saying, you know, I'm wholeheartedly agree. We do not need that overpass. And what I really don't appreciate is that we have all these different jurisdictions that weigh in on this, and it's very fragmented. And, you know, maybe you all could think about having, once and for all, let's just put this thing to rest, because this is not good for the residents. On number 15, the dual jurisdictions, on, I think it was page 62 of the agenda notes, there was a statement from the Woodlands that said, you know, "We can't change our rules, it's going to take 2/3rds of a vote." So we know that's a pretty much impossibility. When I spoke here the last time, I was not asking for that. In fact, I acknowledged that was the case. And what I said was, "We need to find a workaround solution." We don't need, with inflation the way it is, we shouldn't waste taxpayers' money by having two separate jurisdictions issue permits for the same thing. And secondly, I question why do we even need a permit to replace an existing fence or, say, existing windows? That has been approved at some point. And so, I mean, the council should rethink whether that even makes sense that we have to have a permit, because it is taking up resources, and right now, inflation is just, it's hurting everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Okay, next up, Sarah Warmeth.
I have a handout also.
Oh, okay.
For each of you.
See, Alex, you should have given your handout first.
I'm not trained up for it. Working on that issue.
Members of City Council, I am back because we have received another noncompliance letter from the Woodlands Township. I've given each of you a copy of my comments at the last City Council meeting and all the correspondence that we have received from Renewal by Anderson, who have been so professional and helpful. As you look at the second page, you will see that Leanna Janice said that sections five, six, and seven are not theirs, and that they only need to be reviewed by the city of Shenandoah. We have passed all of the Shenandoah inspections. I spoke again this afternoon with Jill Barnes in the Woodlands about this letter, and she said that what Leanna wrote was wrong and sent me to talk with her supervisor, Rachel Downs. Rachel told her that there was a meeting and to reinstate the double permits. I could not get the date of this meeting because Rachel said she was not privy to this conversation. She said the meeting was between the Shenandoah City Administrator Kathy Ryer and Rachel's supervisor, I'm going to blow this, Nechehan Tesno. They met and decided to reinstate the need for double permits. By all I can tell with legal descriptions, that means that Cantwell Forest, Avalon Oaks, and Dulcimer Woods are the only neighborhoods that have to have these double permits. It appears that Parkgate's legal description is not included with these three sections. So all the other neighborhoods in Shenandoah can do whatever they want to do, and they only need to have Shenandoah's approval. There can be houses falling apart, painted swimming pool blue, et cetera, and it seems Shenandoah barely looks at these, and here we are, having to deal with Shenandoah and the Woodlands. There is absolutely no excuse for this, and the agenda item 15A says it can't be terminated until December 31, 2063, which makes this even worse. People that move to our neighborhoods that want to be out of the Woodlands still have to deal with the Woodlands, which only hurts us if we are trying to sell our homes. And I would like to know when and what meeting Kathy Meyer brought this to City Council. It looks to me like there are deals being done behind closed doors, and that's got to stop. Also, the city needs to straighten this mess out that they have created for us, Alex and I. We live in the city of Shenandoah, and once again, I will stress that we don't pay taxes to the Woodlands or get to vote on any of their projects. And again, I say that it is time for the City Council, Shenandoah City Council, to stand up to the township and get the second permit shenanigans changed. The residents of Cantwell Forest, Avalon Oaks, and Dulcimer Woods are residents of Shenandoah and are not tax coffers for Shenandoah and the Woodlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the last person that signed up is Zalton Carl.
Hello, good evening. Zalton Carl, 18 Karen Oaks Place. So I'm one of the residents here again, advocating for Shenandoah and the Woodlands and Commissioner O'Reilly and NOAC to only consider at-grade improvements at the intersection of Grogan's Mill Road and Research Forest Drive. I too would like to acknowledge Shenandoah and Commissioner O'Reilly for the efforts already implemented. It's been an improvement in mobility and safety. You've heard several different aspects of this, quality of life, unnecessary, level of service. I'd like to focus on the level of service part as well. So not only is the level of service acceptable, according to the data that's supporting the intersection, it will be acceptable with no improvements even up to 2035 and beyond. The improvements already made have drastically improved mobility and safety, and both of those items have been addressed, and the level of service has got to have been approved since then. Further improvements at grade would only make it better. The intersection of Grogan's Mill Road and Lake Woodlands Drive has similar problems, if we can even call it problems, since the level of service is still acceptable at that intersection. The volume of traffic is almost identical, and they are currently at an F at the projections. So we're unclear as to why there's such a focus at this intersection when other ones are in more dire need of taxpayer dollars. As elected representatives, we have over 1,000 people telling each one of you that nobody wants this. And I think that is being heard, and I appreciate everything you've done so far. I can only hope that we can work in a transparent manner to keep this, to keep this intersection safe and moving for everyone. Otherwise, it seems like it's foolish and quite, very honestly, it's not a smart use of tax dollars to pursue that intersection for anything other than at-grade improvements. I'll give you back 50 seconds. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Dr. Jim Wallace.
Hi, my name is Jim Wallace. I live at 216 Silverwood Ranch Drive, and it's good to be back here again. I wanted to speak to the Grogan's Mill Research Forest proposal. A lot of good things have been said, I won't repeat those. One of the things that needs to be considered is, with an overpass, the amount of traffic that's going to be funneled into a two-lane road as you go up towards Wellman, and we just got a stop sign there not that long ago to try to regulate that traffic. And I mean, too many people run it as it is, and if we funnel more traffic in, it'll just make that intersection even worse. And I think not just what happens at the corner of Grogan's Mill and Research Forest needs to be considered, but the effect that that has down the road as we get further down into, towards Wellman and into other parts of Shenandoah, that needs to be weighed, too. So I support any at-grade improvements that can be made, not an overpass or an underpass, and I would like to see the council support that, as it seems that you are. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one more. Take your time, no rush. Just do me a favor and introduce yourself. Come on up, come on up to the podium. Yeah.
I'm Hardering.
No, that's okay.
I'm Sidon Harris. Moved into the Woodlands about four weeks ago. We live at 10 Karen Oaks Place, which is just, I'm going to get my directions next to, just north of Research Forest. And I'm here to speak against any modifications to the Grogan Mill and Research Forest intersection. And a lot of things come to mind. One, I notice when we drive in, there's a sign that says "No Through Trucks," and that has to be there because of the DB level of trucks. So elevating a pass over Grogan Mills is going to increase the DB level. I don't know what the restrictions are here as far as residential areas and DB levels, but I suspect that would exceed the normal DB level that you'd expect in a house, in the residential service. Also, I was thinking about the way the traffic flows. The traffic light at Grogan Mills and Research Forest stops traffic flow so that it's a normal flow of traffic. If you have an overpass, by the time you get to the next traffic light, you're going to have people, I'd say, speeding over the overpass, people turning west onto Grogan Mills, all going to convene at the next stoplight, which will create another hazard problem. So I would say I'm not prepared. I just came to the meeting and thought, gee whiz, as I sat here, I thought I better say something, because I'm totally against any modification of that, because the traffic light does control the flow of traffic, which will eliminate speeding, eliminate congestion on down the road. So that's what I had to say.
We're glad you came. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as always, if you didn't get a chance to sign up to speak, we do have a second citizens forum at the end of the meeting. Feel free to sign up and speak then. With that, we will move into our first council inquiry. Anybody have anything right now? You do?
Yes.
Councilman Raymaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to mark the passing of Randy Morris, former City Councilman. I had the privilege to meet Randy on a couple occasions, and just want to express my sympathies to his family and friends. Then I also wanted to congratulate Kathy Ryer for being accepted into the Texas Women's Leadership Institute for the Class of 2022. They only select 20 people a year, and so Kathy has been honored that way.
Thank you for that, Councilman. I can't hardly hear you, though. Move your microphone up. Y'all hear him fine? Maybe it's just me.
I hear him just fine.
Okay, we'll move into item seven, and the HTL companies were not able to make it tonight, so do we need to officially table this agenda item bill, I guess? No?
You can just pass it.
We're just going to pass on this. We'll strike it from the agenda, and we'll bring this back up when they're able to be here. And that will bring us to item eight, which is a discussion regarding a proposed resolution, a resolution opposing an elevated connection between Grogan's Mill Road and Research Forest and supporting an at-grade solution. As most of you know, Commissioner Charlie Riley is here tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Charlie Riley and our engineering firm, Blile Associates, John Blile, to approach the podium. And now, this is an agenda item, so they're not able to answer questions. However, we are going to have a town hall meeting that I think we've just about got etched in stone for December 9th. Don't know the time yet. My wife's just now hearing about this for the first time, so it's probably going to be somewhere around 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, and try to give everybody a chance to get home from work. So we'll have a town hall meeting, you'll have a chance to probably ask John Blile if he's able to be here. You'll definitely be able to ask Commissioner O'Reilly, because he'll be here, any questions and have some open discussion with him. For tonight, we're just going to talk about the proposal and the resolution. Commissioner Riley?
Well, Mayor, Council, thank you all for allowing us to come up here and present what we think is a very workable solution for some improvements at an intersection that I'll quite frankly be, I'll be frank with, that we've talked about it, and we've studied it, and we've talked about it, and we've studied it, and we've talked about it, and we've studied it, and studied it, and studied it. So we need to get something on the ground that's going to give us some relief. Back in April, I think it was April, after we had another meeting and some other things were brought up about another overpass, and that was the solution, I had asked John with Blile Engineering if he would go out and try to find an at-grade solution that would give us some relief now and for sometime in the future. Well, John has done that, and he's come back with a pretty good solution that I think, and it's probably going to need a little tweaking. You know, we're still looking at it, we're still trying to crunch some numbers, and we're still trying to make sure that what we're looking at is going to improve the traffic flow, improve the safety, and improve mobility, and again, improve the quality of life. You know, if you can get through the intersection, and you can get through the intersection safely, and we can move traffic, and we can get a level of service better than what we've got now for 10 years, 15 years, and I think John is trying to get it up to 2035 or even 2040. I don't know for sure we can make that happen, but I do know that we can make some of these improvements, or all of these improvements, and get us some immediate relief right now and not wait 10 or 15 more years to study and talk about this thing. You know, I came into office in 2015, that was one of the first things we started talking about, and we're still talking about it. So I want to commend John, and I've asked John to look at a couple of other things here, and I've asked him to have something, did I ask you this, or did I not ask you this yet?
I do this all the time.
I may not have asked him this yet.
You asked him in your head.
So John, I'm going to ask you now. I think I asked you this. and get us some immediate relief right now and not wait 10 or 15 more years to study and talk about this thing. You know, I came into office in 2015. That was one of the first things we started talking about. And we're still talking about it. So I want to commend John and I've asked John to look at a couple of other things here. And I've asked him to have something, did I ask you this or did I not ask you this yet?
I do this all the time.
I may not have asked him this yet.
You asked him in your head.
So John, I'm gonna ask you now. I think I asked you this. We need to do a little tweaking and we know what we need to tweak. But I was, I'm gonna ask you to have it back here by the end of the year that, some kind of plan that maybe we can come back at the first of the year with something solid that we know has the level of service, has the safety, has the signalization the way we want it, where we need to move things, what we need to do. And I wanted to, I want to ask John again, and I did ask him this. If we get all that put together, we want to have this on the ground by the end of next year. That's my goal. So I know that's a big, it may be pushing it a little bit, but I think working with y'all.
I just saw Jennifer swallow real hard.
I know. I didn't even look at Jennifer. I know I'll have to talk to Jennifer later. I know that. Matter of fact, I can feel it right here. So I know working with y'all, working with John, working with everybody here, I know we, I just know we can make that happen. And again, a right turn lane did wonders off of Grogan's on the research. A right turn lane, a right turn lane off of Research on the Grogan's headed west, it's gonna do the same thing. So I know we can make this happen. I know we can make it fit. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna do something to make it fit. It's gonna be right or we're not gonna do it. And I know John wouldn't do that, but I'm putting a little pressure on John and Jennifer and all these, all these guys over here. Blal, they're probably all swallowing a little hard right now. But I know we can make it happen and I look forward to making it happen and making some improvements around here so we can move forward and make life a little easier for all of us. So.
John, you want to just briefly kind of describe what we're looking at?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I'm gonna thank Commissioner Riley for, for asking me in public to commit to the schedule.
On the record.
At least he didn't give me a budget. So it was good news. So if, Chris, if you can go back to the first exhibit, there should be two. We can start there. So just to update everybody on where we are. Commissioner Riley commissioned us to do a traffic study. We have modeled the intersection for at-grade solutions. We are currently working with the Montgomery County Traffic Manager, going over our model with, with the traffic manager for the county. A lot of that signalization, we know that there's gonna be tweaking in the signalization. The exhibit on the screen is, it just shows you the city limit line, which is the red line. So Shenandoah City Limits does not go into the intersection. You can see where it stops. But this is a critically important part, project for the citizens of Shenandoah. We all know that. So that's where we are. We've done the modeling. We have the traffic counts. We have the levels of service. We're tweaking, like the commissioner said. If you go to the next exhibit, Chris, so that's, that's one of the options that we're looking at. I'm not gonna go into detail on, on these exhibits. We can talk more in detail at the workshop session. But we think we're getting close to a final at-grade solution that will work for everybody. Will improve the levels of service. And we believe we'll maintain those levels of service through 2040. At least that's what the modeling shows right now. So do you have any questions on where we are on this?
So I did have one question. So Jano brought this up and I thought it was, it was fantastic because it was a nice neat little table here. That currently, if we don't touch anything, we literally don't do a thing, don't drop any asphalt, concrete, anything, we've got acceptable service till 2045. So I'm hoping that by doing this little tweak, we can, we can push that further. Or are we moving from, from a D up to a B level of service? Is that, is that the thought here?
First of all, I'd like to compliment Jano for her presentation. That was wonderful. I need to get you to my office sometime and present. But to answer your question, our model shows that we can, we can get, 2030, we can get five Bs and an A. And then for 2045, we can, it's, we lose the A. We have all Bs. And that's, you know, that's what our model shows based on traffic projections from HGAC, which is the same.
Yeah, same, same projections.
Yeah, that's right. That's what the Strand Study used. So it was apples to apples. But, so we can improve the levels of service from where they are today and we think we can maintain those at least B level through 2045.
I think B levels can absolutely would be phenomenal.
Yes.
Considering what, I mean, the other intersections in the area are.
Not to mention the safety. I always go back to, if we can make this intersection safer, that's a, that's a huge deal. Because it is, everybody knows it's an, the intersection does have problems. At one time, it was rated, at one time, it was rated the highest frequency of accidents in Montgomery County. I don't know if it still is, but at one time.
It's still way up there.
Still is, yeah. Still up there. So if we can fix it, that's just gonna be better for everybody. So I'll read real quick the resolution, just for anybody in the audience or on YouTube that does not have the agenda packet sitting in front of them. The, the resolution basically says, "A resolution opposing an elevated connection between Grogan's Mill Road and Research Forest and supporting an at-grade solution. Whereas the city of Shenandoah supports the economic development in Montgomery County, Texas. Whereas economic development and quality of life are directly affected by mobility and economical and environmentally responsible roadway improvements. And whereas some elected officials have proposed an elevated connection between Grogan's Mill Drive and Research Forest Drive. And whereas an elevated connection will cause both noise and site pollution for the residents of the Woodlands and Shenandoah. And whereas an at-grade solution exists that will minimize noise and site pollution and is millions of dollars less expensive than an elevated connection. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Shenandoah opposes the construction of an elevated connection between Research Forest and Grogan's Mill Road and supports at-grade solutions for connecting Research Forest Drive and Grogan's Mill Road." So this is a discussion item. Council, feel free to ask Commissioner Riley or.
If we could add to the resolution excluding an underpass as well.
Well, yeah, I was, I was gonna mention the same thing. I already made a note. I'm glad it was brought up.
Yeah.
Any, I would say, any grade separation, I don't know if that's the best terminology, or underpass and/or overpass. Whichever verbiage is, is better and more comprehensive. The other thing I'd like to include is, in one of our "whereas" is, that again, to state that the Grogan's Mill north of Research Forest is designated a residential feeder street. I know Joseph, there's a legal street term for that and I can't remember off the top of my head what it is. But that's, that's what we use it for. That's what we designated it for in our, in our plan.
Right, like on a thoroughfare plan, a local street.
It's a local street. It's not meant to be a thoroughfare street. It's not meant to be, it's, it's, you know, I think that's important to include in this because it affects that four-way intersection. One of those four ways is, is coming out residential. That's, that's why I would like a statement to that effect.
I would agree with you, Mike. That's a good, good adjustment overall.
Could we put the first slide up again that showed the city limits? Yeah, I had asked for the city limits to be on here to just kind of show one thing that, and that's that it's outside of Shenandoah. But I think we all know that there is one particular commissioner that really favors having a grade separation. It's not Charlie Riley. So we're, we really appreciate having a strong advocate like you that would stand in the way of something like that to protect us. But I think, I think folks need to, you know, let Commissioner Noack know their feelings about this as well.
Well, and again, we've, we've had discussions with Commissioner Noack and he, his concern is, we want to make sure the study's right. We all want to do that. I'm not in favor of just going out here and putting something on the ground because number one, it's gonna make it worse. And number two, if we end up with a D service level and we got four more lanes on the ground, that's not good. And I'm not real crazy about having a D service. If that's acceptable, I'm not real crazy about that. I'm truly not. But that's what they say. That's acceptable. I don't really buy into that. If we can get better than that, we need to get better than that. But I think we will all, everybody will get on board once we get the numbers nailed down. And I'm confident that John is gonna do what he needs to do. He's not gonna do anything that's out of the ordinary. He's gonna make the numbers come out the way they should for what's on this, what we're gonna do here and we can move forward. I do want to thank the mayor and I want to thank Kathy for all the, and John and his staff and everybody, for all the meetings that we had, the rescheduling, the scheduling, the moving around. Friggin' COVID, I'm up to here with COVID. So, I mean, we, we gotta move on and quit thinking about COVID. We gotta move forward and make things happen and that's what I want to do. And I think this is a very good start to make things happen. So.
Thanks again for being a strong advocate for Shenandoah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the other thing everybody has to remember is that, you know, this overpass has been talked about not for the last five years, but 40 years it's been on plans. The problem with that is that 40 years ago, none of the, none of the building around this overpass was here. And now it's filled with businesses and residents and there's nothing positive in regards to an overpass. I think the other thing that the citizens of Shenandoah need to remember when it comes to voting time this next year is who actually stepped up to the plate and that was Commissioner Charlie Riley. And I think it's important that when we go to the polls, that we show him with our votes that we appreciate all he's done for our city. Because it's not the first time he stood up for us. It's been many times over and over. So Charlie, I really appreciate you stepping up to the plate for us.
And I appreciate y'all. And again, some gentleman, a gentleman a while ago said it, and we've said this many times in our meeting, you build an overpass, it just, it gets them quicker to all the other congested spots. That's all it does. I mean, so I'm okay, I'm, I want to move traffic, but we gotta work from one end to the other to make it all tie together. And this will help what we need to do.
Yes, sir.
And we'll look at Wellman Road, whatever we need to look at. Once we get this going, we'll, we'll look at all of them. Okay?
One of the, one of the tweaks that I would like to bring to the table for you is, is acceleration lanes on your, on your turn lanes so they could merge rather than just be dumped into that right-hand lane. I don't know what that would cost to extend it a couple hundred feet or if you're about to ride away to even do that, but.
We'll, we'll, we'll let John worry about that.
Remember, nothing's designed yet and this is just an exhibit. But yes, I hear what you're saying and you're absolutely correct. And we'll make sure that we get as much as we can get in terms of acceleration.
Thank you, John.
And we, we'll look at the, we'll look at the right turn lane we've got now. We put that in, we put that in to get immediate relief. And if we need to look at that with this, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, and it worked. I mean, that was a, that was a perfect, you know, dip your toe in the water kind of deal. And we proved that it works, so absolutely.
And the yield sign was probably the best thing because I watched them go out in there and just, and there's no place to merge. And if they, they can't turn their head far enough to see anybody in the right-hand lane.
I understand.
I've watched.
And Mayor, council, we're gonna, we're gonna ease on out.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind.
No, you got a long drive.
We appreciate y'all and thanks for all y'all's support.
Thanks for coming.
And thank y'all again. Call if y'all need something. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Thanksgiving, all of them. I'll see you on the ninth. I'm sorry.
We'll see y'all on the ninth. And, and a, Commissioner Riley? Don't forget Lighting of the Angels, Lighting of the Angels Tuesday, November 30th.
We'll be here. We'll be here. Thank y'all.
We'd love to see you.
Thank y'all.
So the main point for putting this on the agenda tonight as a discussion-only item was this should give everybody a chance to read the resolution and respond. If you're listening on YouTube, if you're here tonight, you want to email a council member, email me, email the city administrator. If you have input, please do so. We will bring this back for a vote. So it's, it's on there tonight so that everybody can have some time to chew on it and digest it. And then we'll bring it back for a vote probably at the December meeting. So it gives everybody plenty of chance to talk about it between now and then. We might need to bring it back for a vote. If we're gonna have the town hall on the 9th, well, we'll look at that. We'll look at, if we can bring it back in December, we may need to wait till January. But either way, we will be bringing it back. So. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to item nine, which is discussion and possible action to award an impact fee for Pine Forest Drive. I believe we have a presentation that goes along?
Well, let me start out, council. In 2012, so we're going back nine years. The entity that, that developed the office condominiums at the end of what is now Pine Forest Drive asked the city to build a street that connected Vision Park to their property. The city said, declined because of budgetary reasons, but instead said, "If you build the road and pay for the road, if anyone else wants access to the road, we will impose an impact fee that will go back to you. You'll be reimbursed for the money that you've advanced." Years passed for reasons that no one on staff knows and can figure out. The two places right at the corner of Vision Park and Pine Forest Drive were allowed to connect. And there was no impact fee charged to those two people. No one on staff, and we have researched the record, can figure out why that happened. Right now, we have an entity, and I think the name has changed, but it would be Global, was Global Shenandoah, would like to connect to Pine Forest Drive. And we told them, "You'll have to pay an impact fee." We sat down with them. The original cost of the road was $665,000. They said, "We think that all of that is not road improvement." We asked Rual to sit down with them and go through the numbers. And we came to an agreement of $478,199.25 was the road cost and the things actually associated with the road. We then said to, what I'll term as the Global Shenandoah people, "You owe half of that because the impact fee has never been charged." And of course, the people that built the road owed half. So you would owe $239,099.62. The ordinance that we passed back in 2012 specifically provided that if they disagreed with the $239,000 number, they could come in front of city council and ask that that number change. And, and so that's what they have asked to do. In the interim, I have contacted the people that paid for the construction of the road and, and said, "There's an impact fee. You're fixing to get some money. And we would like to sit down with you and see if you agree on this $479,000 number." I contacted their lawyers on August the 11th, October 13th, October 20th, October 22nd, November 3rd, November 10th, and again today. All of these times before, they have declined to respond to me. I've had one telephone call back in August with their lawyer. And so they did not participate in, when we came up with Rual and them, the $478,000 number. The representatives from Global Shenandoah are here tonight. And they're going to, I'm, I'm gonna ask Brian to come up and give their position. I just wanted you to have the history of this as best we know. Brian?
Thank you, Bill. And good evening, city council, Mayor Wheeler. Thank you for having us. My name is Brian Albert. I'm a partner with the Strong Firm. I am here representing Global Shenandoah One LLC, the current title owner to the subject property. Previously, before the meeting, had handed out a presentation, a slide deck. I do have a, I do have a flash drive if you'd like to put it on the screen. Otherwise, you can follow along with me. The first few pages are just some maps to orient yourself with the subject property.
Could we bring the flash drive?
Sure, of course.
Just so the folks at home might get an idea.
While he's getting that, I might just give you the numbers. If you chose to divide that in half, these people would owe $239,099.62. If you chose to divide it by four, they would owe $119,549.81.
And I'm sorry, I just wanted to correct myself. I did say title owner. They were the, they were the title owner. They recently closed on the sale to an affiliate of I-3 Interest. They're a Houston-based commercial real estate developer. Some gentlemen representing that, that now owner are here. Global Shenandoah is remaining as a, as a partner in that development going forward. So they still have an interest. But up until recently, this, all my work has been on behalf of. But up until recently, this, all my work has been on behalf of Global Shenandoah. They've been, they were the owner since 2009, so they've been a, a long-term taxpayer and partner here. They were part of the, a lot of the developments along the I-45 theater, where now Starbucks, Ethan Allen, where, where those retail centers are. The first few pages here, again, are some maps to orient yourself, as well as a brief history. I think Bill did a good job running through that for you. One point I would like to clarify, in the ordinance language itself, there is some language that does reference the idea that, and I quote, "Any property owner who elects to access, who elects access to North-South Street" would be also subject to the sharing of the impact fee. And that is in line with both, you know, typical law, statutory law in the state of Texas, from municipalities assessing an impact fee, as well as, if you go to the page before it, the city council meeting discussion when this ordinance was adopted. There are multiple quotes that are included in our presentation specifically discussing the idea that if there were future properties that gained access to this road, that they would be assessed a pro-rata share of the total development costs. And, and so at, at a bare minimum, one of the, the first thing that we're asking tonight is consideration for a reduction in that impact fee from the initial city position of 50% down to 25%, recognizing that the subject property would be the fourth property having access to Pine Forest Drive. So the, and we believe that, again, the, the discussion and the ordinance self supports that position. The city staff did a, a great job working with us to define what the actual development costs were. And I do like to point out that the initial numbers provided by the city were quite higher than the number eventually agreed to. In discussions with city staff, it was determined that essentially the records supporting the original development, again acknowledging this was back in 2012, simply aren't there. And so there is some unknown involved with how this came about, how it should have been interpreted. So we are trying to rely on a strict interpretation of the ordinance language in the meeting minutes to the extent they're available. In the alternative, and, and really what the preference is, and the big request tonight is for a total waiver of the impact fee. Attorney, city attorney Mr. Farabee did reference the, his multiple attempts to reach the legal counsel for the original developer. It's an entity that was called Pine Forest Office LLC. That entity elected voluntarily to dissolve itself in 2020, over a year ago. There is a copy of the certificate of termination filed with the state of Texas included in your packet. And again, that was a, a voluntary decision by that entity to close down. And by law, that entity has no contractual rights remaining. It has no liabilities. It is defunct for all purposes. Both Mr. Farabee and myself made contact with the known and represented legal counsel for this now-defunct entity, attorney-in-conre Steve Weisenger, who did acknowledge that he, he continued to represent the original principal of that entity, that he was in discussions with her regarding this. And then he essentially stopped responding to all of our attempts over the past six months to discuss this, try to understand what's going on. And currently, and it's included on your packet as Exhibit B, just about an hour before I showed up here, I did check the Secretary of State franchise tax status, just to see if somehow that entity got reinstated, and in fact, it did not. So as of right now, to the best of my knowledge, an hour ago, that entity still does not exist. And so the basis of our request for the waiver is the fact that if we pay, whether it's the 50% number, 25% number, or some lesser amount as agreed by the council, that money will come to the city. But because the city never paid a penny in the, in these development costs, it has no rights to those funds. The entirety of those funds by the ordinance are then owed to an entity that does not exist. And by, by corporate law, statutory understandings, there, there's no one that has a right or claim to that because that entity is defunct. So ultimately, what would happen is the city would receive these funds, again, something in the six figures, would have no right to do anything with it. And eventually, assuming that there was never any attempts by this prior developer to claim those funds, to reinstate itself and claim those funds, eventually the city would just have to eschew those funds to the state of Texas. Meaning, it would disappear, no one would get the benefit of it, and it would sit there, subject to whatever statute of limitations apply to that entity to, to try to claim it back from the state. What we're saying is because Global Shenandoah and I-3 Interest are the current developers, and I skipped over this, but they are developing, to the extent you're not aware, a 50,000-square-foot medical office building on this four-acre track. It will include both office and retail, bringing obviously jobs and, and retail sales to the city of Shenandoah. They have full intent to develop that entire parcel. And as again, again, Global Shenandoah has been a developer and partner in this city for some time. Those funds very easily would, would very easily go into the, the continuing development of this site. It's a over, it's a million-dollar, seven-figure development. Costs have already been put into it. Costs will continue to be put into it. Those funds can go a long way into further developing that site instead of disappearing to the state or wherever else it might go. So again, in, in closing, we are asking for a full waiver of the impact fee due to the defunct status and the failed response of the original developer, who's the only party that has any claim to these funds. And in the alternative, at the very least, a reduction of, to 20, 25% of the agreed development costs that the city staff has already agreed to as being the, the final number, to at least be proportional to the sharing of the four parcels that would then have access to Pine Forest Drive. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
I'd like to ask our attorney, Bill, what's your opinion on the, the payment situation? He's talking about the payment being due to a defunct corporation.
My recommendation in that regard would be, let's just say, pick that you said we're gonna divide it by four, that the $119,000 be placed in, with the city in an account that I notify Steve Weisenger in writing that that money is there and give him blank. Three months, six months, nine months, whatever. And then if that money, if, if the money is not claimed, because Brian is correct, the only way that money can be reclaimed is to reinstate the corporation. It's not hard to do. There may be other reasons that they don't want to. But we could hold that money for a period of time, and if the money was not claimed, let's just say in a year, I'm just using a term, then it would be, it could be returned to, what I'm using is Global Shenandoah I-3. So that's another option that you have.
Okay. So if I may. Have to go back to the state, it could actually just be returned to you.
Right, and Mr. Farabee can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's up to the agreement of, of the city council. You can make any kind of agreement in that regard.
And what benefit would the city have, have, and what position would the city have doing that?
Well, the city, I've never been in a situation where a company put up money and, and is being told, we've got money for you, and it's just non-responsive. It's, frankly, it's frustrating to me. But certainly, if you chose to hold that money for, again, six months, and it remains unclaimed, this city council has the right, and, and you do have in the ordinance to totally waive that fee.
So there's four accesses, or will be four accesses. Does anybody else contribute it?
No, and we do not know why the other two were not asked to contribute.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
And I'll add.
Go for it. I, I'd like to just make a motion that we waive the impact fee. In this matter, I mean.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to waive the impact fee. I have a second by Councilman McLeod. We're gonna have some discussion.
I had one more question.
That's fine.
Is there some kind of legal redemption period that they're entitled to?
Yeah, look, I'm, I'm not overly concerned with who didn't do their job previous to us. What I'm concerned is whether or not we do our job. If the ordinance says 50/50, then, and the number is 660, quite frankly, not a, a made-up number or a refigured number of 478, then we either agree that we should be collecting half of the 660, which is $330,000, or we agree that said corporation is defunct, and there's no point to, to collect that money because it's a pass-through anyway to the city of Shenandoah, and it's not our money. The only thing that I'll say about that is, is we also don't want to be liable for not doing our job, whether or not somebody else didn't do theirs previously. So what I would say is if we're going to waive, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to waiving the impact fee, what I would like is I would like for Global Shenandoah to sign some sort of contractual agreement saying that if said corporation ever came back and held us harmless, or held us liable, rather, for, for not collecting that impact fee, Global Shenandoah then would at that time pay that impact fee, and hold Shenandoah harmless, rather than us being in a position of having to pay the impact fee.
You can certainly have a motion that's subject to that, yes.
So that's my two cents.
That's fair.
Would you amend your motion to approve that?
So I will amend my motion to include that.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
I have another question, Bill. Do we need to modify or rescind that ordinance before we do this?
No, the, the ordinance will die with, with the last connection.
It's the last connection, sir.
Otherwise, we would need to do something.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to waive the impact fee with the understanding of a contractual agreement that Global Shenandoah would be responsible for any liabilities to the city of Shenandoah for not collecting it. We have a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Should say, and we've stated what amount.
Oh, yeah, we do need to know. I, I would modify the, the motion to read that, you know, we were waiving the, the impact fee based on the fact that Pine Forest Office LLC is defunct. However, that should Pine Forest LLC ever reinstate and come back to the city for the collection of these fees, that since it's a four-access, and everybody was supposed to pay their fair share, that.
It's $119,549.
That, that, you know, we would be at $119,000.
How do you, how do you get $119,000?
Divided by four.
Well, you're taking the 478, but, but the 660 was the original number, I thought.
Well, to, to be fair, here's, and Rual can speak to this also. The, what was paid, the $665,000 was paid for streets, underground utilities, sidewalks, vegetation, whatever. And Rual went through this, the numbers, and said, wait, some of these are not really street-related. Some of these were more for the convenience of the city and benefit of the city.
Okay, but did we agree to Pine Forest LLC that the number was 660? Because what I don't want to have happen is we end up being liable for the $50,000 delta that they're gonna come back and ask for.
Well, two things. They have been invited to the table on one, two, three, four, five, six occasions, and elected not to participate. Number two is the ordinance specifically provides that you can reduce, that you can modify the impact fee. So I, I don't see any legal liability, especially, I'm very comfortable that Rual has, has correctly divided out what is street versus other benefits to the city.
So basically, whenever you do projects like this, you divide it into basically W, S, and D, which is water sanitary drainage, and then you do the paving. Basically, what we did is, we, we came together like a couple, like three times with, with our managing unit firm. We, and we agreed that all water sanitary drainage was removed from the, from the final numbers. Also, the driveways, tunnels, were basically the big items that were removed along there.
And if I may add, the ordinance did not include a, a figure, a number in it. It just referenced total development cost for the road. And that was the basis of our initial contest of the, the 660 number that was given to us at the inception.
I, I would just change it to say 25% and not put a dollar figure on it. They can come up with their own dollar figure.
Yeah, that's right.
That works, that works.
So final question on the, on the, you know, we've assessed and set up impact fees for access to water and sewer for future developments. How is that affected by this development?
None.
This is just the road access portion of it.
This is, this is.
So when they decide to actually build, they're gonna have to come and deal with that situation.
Which is currently undergoing. The permit, the development permits have been submitted.
That's all through permitting.
Yeah, yeah, yes, correct.
It's a totally new project.
Right, right, yeah, it's currently undeveloped.
Cool. Yeah, I like the 25%. So I'll second that, too. Complicated enough.
You got all that, Bill? So after, you don't have to restate it. Courtney's probably, she's taking notes, it looks like. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to item 10, which is discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance to the city of Shenandoah by adding Chapter 75, Article 2, Stormwater Providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a servability clause, and providing that this warning shall become effective from and after its passage and adoption and publication by caption only in the official newspaper of the city.
Joseph's gonna read the rest of it.
Right.
I can give a quick summary of why this is before you, if you're interested, Council. So the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality requires protection of stormwater as it passes through muds, municipalities, and other utility districts. Since we're a municipality, we have a storm collection system. We need to make sure that people are not polluting in it and that we're protecting that water. There's a, a special focus on stormwater because it is untreated as it goes downstream, unlike with sanitary sewer. It actually goes through a treatment facility. Stormwater, whatever you pour down at storm inlet, if it's motor oil or whatever it may be, that's gonna go straight into the San Jacinto River and downstream. So they're, they're requiring, the EPA is requiring TCQ, and TCQ is requiring us to have an ordinance protecting our stormwater and to establish penalties if folks violate that. So that's what's before you. We actually used an outline, a draft outline that was provided by TCQ. That was our basis, made a few modifications. And you'll see that before you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker to approve. I have a second by Councilman Moscato. Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 11, discussion and possible action to approve an agreement with Memorial Hermann Hospital, The Woodlands, and authorize the city administrator to sign.
Council, this goes back to our agreement with Waterlines with Memorial Hermann. We've reached an agreement with Memorial Hermann a few months ago. We finalized it. And when I looked at the first ordinance, we did not actually authorize either the mayor or the city administrator to sign the agreement. So we need authorization for someone to sign the agreement. And I put in this case, the city administrator, but if, mayor, if you'd like to.
I'm good with that. I have a motion by Councilman Moscato to approve. We have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion and possible action to approve the city's holidays for 2022.
Council, this is an annual housekeeping item where we just select the holidays that we're gonna observe each year. And if, if the holidays fall on a weekend, we select either the Friday or the Monday, depending upon whether it's a Saturday or Sunday. So this is just for, for your consideration. If you want to discuss any alternatives, the policy provides for 10 paid holidays. If we add a holiday or subtract a holiday, we would need to modify the policy.
I'd like to propose adding two holidays. I'd like to add, I think it's important to recognize June 19th, Juneteenth, and also add November 11th, Veterans Day. I would also propose, in doing so, that we remove the floating holiday, the employee's birthday.
I'd agree with that.
What was the first date?
The Juneteenth, June 19th, Emancipation Day. This is, I looked it up, this is in keeping with the state of Texas, Montgomery County, and the US federal government. That's, they have both of those holidays, so...
And we would follow the federal observance then.
And then, yeah.
I don't like taking away the employee's birthday, the floating holiday. I would be in favor of leaving the floating holiday for the employee's birthday and adding Veterans Day, if we want to add a holiday. I don't like taking away their birthday for, you know...
We've discussed the birthday thing before. It's kind of like a floating holiday. I don't know why we never turned it into PTO, but it acts as PTO. I wouldn't want to be restricted.
Were we in a motion yet? Let's have a motion. We're in discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule with the modifications I suggested.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman McLeod, we have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Now we'll have discussion.
There you go.
Yeah, we talked about the birthday thing before and employee taking it during the month, and either the, I always thought they should have the flexibility to take it whenever as a total floating holiday. So I never liked that it was bound to their birth month anyway, so...
I mean, all employees have PTO, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think, I just think it's important to celebrate June 19th and, of course, November 11th, recognizing both of those days as really important days in our, both our country's and our state's history.
How does staff feel about the floating holiday?
To my knowledge, everyone loves having the floating holiday. As far as the birthday aspect, they have the entire month to take that holiday. If they're not able to take off, then we let them, we extend it to when they're able to, so it's not super rigid. I can tell you, there have been a number of staff members who have asked if we could consider Veterans Day or if council would consider it. We used to have that day off, and it was eliminated because it was so close to Thanksgiving, and it always seemed to fall on Agenda Preparation Week. But there are a number of employees who would like to honor Veterans Day.
Should be 11-11.
And of course, the employees would not be opposed to adding holidays, so...
Okay, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1. We will add Veterans Day and June 19th, and we will eliminate the floating holiday for the employee's birthday.
And just for the record, we'll be bringing back a few other minor policy changes, January probably, and we can include this one. It's a minor thing.
Item 13, discussion and possible action to elect a member to the Montgomery County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Council, this is another annual exercise. You nominated Councilman Raymaker, and this is the part where we vote. You can put all of our eight votes toward Councilman Raymaker, or they can be divided across the other candidates.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to, we cast all eight votes.
Ron Raymaker, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher. I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Any discussion?
I just hope that they decide to elect me so I can save you all money. I like this. Which is probably why I won't get elected.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 14, discussion and possible action to authorize a purchase from assets forfeiture funds.
Mayor and council, due to the nature of this restricted account, I have to bring it before you to expense any money, just like the leaders fund and the equipment replacement fund. The police department has asked for council to approve purchases that are eligible with asset forfeiture funds, as seen in your agenda packet. They are all eligible, and the current balance of the asset forfeiture account is at about $6,750, $6,750, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Brodt, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 15, and I apologize for not moving this up earlier, actually, that's my fault, I should have done that. Item 15, discussion regarding dual jurisdictions in the Grovins Forest neighborhood. This is a discussion-only item, and I think Kathy is going to give us a presentation.
First of all, in the agenda report, this is information that I received from the township to sort of explain, you know, the process of having those covenants removed, if they were to be removed, and it requires an election. This information is, I think everybody has taken a look at it, but I would like to clarify some comments made by Ms. Warmout. The meeting that we had with the township, and I want to say it might have been earlier this year, COVID kind of has run the dates together for me, but we met with the township for the express reason of trying to simplify this process. The covenants have always been in place since these areas were annexed. This is not a new thing. We didn't go to the township asking them to just start enforcing them. I was joined by the city attorney and our development director, Jackie Thompson, who also handles code enforcement, to try and coordinate our efforts so that we didn't have our businesses and our residents receiving letters that we didn't know about, with the goal of them communicating with us first. So if they were going to send any kind of a notice to the residents or the businesses, we would know about it first, and it wouldn't be a surprise. Now, to my knowledge, the way that they handle their monitoring is sort of cyclical. It's not, they have so much territory to cover that they take it in waves. They'll go around and look at everything, whereas we have a smaller footprint, so our code enforcement, they look at things every day, all throughout the week. So in an effort to better coordinate our efforts, that was the meeting that we had. And this is to help reduce the frustration on the part of our businesses and residents. Now, when they purchase their home, they receive this information, they receive The Woodlands covenants and the processes and so forth, but it can still be a surprise and it can still be very frustrating, and we certainly understand that we don't want that for our residents or our businesses. I have been discussing with the city attorney the idea of setting a follow-up meeting to try and make Shenandoah sort of a one-stop shop. So in other words, we would guide the residents and the businesses through any type of permit requirements or covenant requirements, such as what does the woodlands require for fences in the Section 5, 6, and 7? What do they require for paint colors or whatever else may apply? And we, I've talked with Jeff Jones with the township, and we are trying to set that meeting for somewhere around mid-December. As Mr. Farabee advised me earlier this week, if there is a violation of The Woodlands covenants, our authority stops there, and the woodlands would be the entity that would enforce that. So the violations would go to the woodlands and not to the city, but typically, residents are going to comply, but we would try to help guide that process, simplify that process, address any questions. If we needed to get information from the woodlands, we could handle that. So that's where we are now, that's where we were, that's where we are now, and we are making an effort to mitigate this frustration because we know it's very real. And I'll let, Bill has anything to add?
I really don't, other than Jeff has been very open. We've made a couple of suggestions. He has been very open to, we believe, we hope, that we could reach an agreement where a resident in those areas would only have to make one stop for a permit. And let me just give you an example real quickly. As you may know or not, The Woodlands has a set colors that you can paint your house. And if this works out, the resident would come to us, and we would say, you've got to paint your house one of these colors because you live in a Woodlands covenant-directed area. And if the resident said, okay, I'll pick gray number three, then we say, good, and life's wonderful. If they turn around and then painted it bright pink, even though they told us they were going to paint it gray, then it would be up to the woodlands to enforce that. We don't have the power to enforce, but we are hopeful we can, Jeff has been plain that he understands the frustration of the residents and he would like to work with us so that at least getting a permit would be a one-stop-shop proposition. So we're trying to work through all the issues right now, and we're optimistic we can do so.
We have a meeting set up with them next month, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
But that's a separate thing.
Well, I'm going to bring it up at that meeting, is why I'm saying that.
That'd be great. That'd be great. We can use all the help we can get.
Yeah, I was about to say, I plan on bringing that up, just in case. Okay, anybody have any questions for Kathy?
You know, I appreciate the effort that you've put forward to try to resolve this for everybody. I understand that everybody signed off on this when they did their closing, and depending on when you did your closing, it was either a one or two inch stack of stuff you probably signed. It's like software Ula. You've got to click yes, or you can't complete the purchase, or you can't use the software. So appreciate you trying to make it better for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, and listen, this may be a moving target for a little while, right? Because we don't, we have no idea what this is going to cost us in man hour or what kind of economic impact it could have, so trying to take on somebody else's code enforcement, we don't know what it means yet, but we'll, you know, we'll just keep navigating as we go and do the best job we can.
Manpower is a concern of mine, too, so we'll definitely be looking at that aspect.
Yeah. It may not, it may not end up looking exactly the way it starts. We may start one way, and then we may have to pivot, you know, who knows? We'll just do the best job we can to try to help our residents out as much as we can, so...
I think eliminating the redundancy in these permit requirements and such, I think that's important. I think that's what the main complaint with the citizens in those areas is, is the redundancy.
Right. But that just means that we're doing double work.
Yes.
Which we just don't know what that looks like yet.
Well, we are, and The Woodlands is much more restrictive than we are.
Right, that's right.
And that's the part I don't like. I mean, at all. Back when, back in the 80s, we dissolved Mutt 59, and we dealt with The Woodlands and had the same, the same issue on all of that property. And we got through it, and for years, they never said anything until just now. So I don't know who's looking at, going way back in history, but I'd certainly like to know that.
Okay, let's move on to item 16, which is discussion and possible action to adopt the minutes of the August 12th special meeting and August 25th, 2021, and September 8th, 2021, regular meetings.
Motion to be approved is read.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brodt, I have a second by Councilman Scotto. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 17, discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for October 2021st. Do we have a motion?
Come on.
I have a motion by Councilman Brodt, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 18, our second citizens forum. Do we have anybody sign up to speak, Ms. Courtney?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No? Okay. Then we will move on to item 19, which is our city administrator updates.
I just have a quick one. Lighting the Angels is Tuesday evening, the 30th, always the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. It's going to be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so we hope that everyone will join us for one of our biggest events of the year.
Commissioner Riley said that he would be there. I've talked to Representative Steve Toth, he is going to try to be there. Judge, County Judge Mark Keough is going to try to be there. I feel like I'm leaving somebody out, but those three I know for sure. So it ought to be a really, it ought to be a great event.
I think Crenshaw's office.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, thank you, Courtney. She always takes care of me.
Did you say he's coming?
Yeah, no, Dan Crenshaw is not coming, but he is sending some community, yeah, representative. I don't know exactly what the title was.
Let's invite him to come speak with us here.
We have. He's in Washington right now. He's hard at work.
Washington, what's it going to be?
Okay, with that, we will move to item 20, which is council inquiry, and we will start with Councilman McLeod.
Okay, I'm good tonight for now.
Councilman Brodt?
Well, just to inform council that Ron Raymaker and I went to the HGAC meeting and elected officers for general law cities last week. Very good meeting, learned a lot of good things. It was very, very good. I gave Kathy some of the information that she can probably pass on, anybody who's interested in it. That's all I got.
Councilman Scotto?
I want to thank the Cairo ISD for their Veterans Day ceremony at Wood Forest Stadium. It was very impressive, very nice, and to all the high school kids, the ROTC kids, a very impressive ceremony.
Thank you. Councilman Fletcher?
I'm just going to reiterate what Kathy said about lighting the angels coming up the 30th. Everybody should have got one of these in the mail, an invite, personal invite to come. So if you haven't got yours yet, check it out. Staff did a great job in putting those out this year to give personal invitations to all of our residents, so everybody will be able to come and enjoy it. And of course, it hasn't happened yet, but we thank Civic Club and staff for all the hard work in being prepared and ready.
That's it. Councilman Raymaker?
Well, it just struck me that it's no shave November for the police department, so, all right. We had a great Halloween event as well. Seems like it's been a long time already, but we had a lot of people lining the streets for the parade, and I'm also looking forward to seeing everybody with lighting the angels.
Absolutely. I'll close, and I know he's not here, but I'll close just by saying I appreciate Commissioner Charlie Riley coming tonight, in addition to all the things he does for us in front of and behind the scenes. I appreciate him taking the time to drive 45 minutes over here from Magnolia to take part in our meeting and visit with our residents. I appreciate all of the residents who came tonight, especially the ones that stuck around, thank you. I appreciate our strategic partners for always showing up and giving us good information. And if y'all didn't notice her, I appreciate my wife showing up. She was here earlier in the back of the room. She didn't always get to come, but tonight she made a point to try to come up here and take part.
She left right after you mentioned the town hall.
Yes, she did, didn't she? That didn't go over nearly as well as I thought it was going to.
No, she didn't really, I understand.
All right, well, anyway, we appreciate everybody coming tonight. So with that, we are going to move into executive session. We are going to deliberate regarding real property, potential purchase of property, and we are also going to deliberate regarding economic development pilot agreements. So we will recess the regular meeting at 8:28 and move into executive session. Thanks for coming, everybody. Thanks for coming, everybody.[521.91]
Okay, we will recess the executive session and resume the regular session at 9:10. For the record, no action was taken. Does anybody have anything before we adjourn the meeting?
Sure.
Nope? Okay, well then we will adjourn the meeting at 9:11. Thanks for coming, everybody.